The meeting is called back to order at 7:03 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, may I have a motion in a second that the agenda of August 7th, 2018 be approved as submitted? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. May I have a motion in a second that the board approve the following consent agenda with addendum, oh wait, excuse me. To include, approval of the minutes of July 10th, 2018 is submitted. Acceptance of recommendations from the committee on special education. Acceptance of recommendations from the committee on preschool special education. Acceptance of recommendations from the superintendent for personnel changes with addendum. Request to approve the recommended better Lathan equipment is written on the agenda. Budget transfers for June 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2018. An approval of request to dispose of unserviceable textbooks. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. You have attached your treasurer's report for the month ending June 30th, 2018. May I have a motion in a second that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending June 30th, 2018 be approved? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right, special reports.
Great. So we have one special report this evening. And I'll have Jennifer Lerner come up to the table, put her on the spot. But I wanted to do a formal introduction to the board, but also to the community watching. Is that Jennifer Lerner is our new special education administrator at Bay Trail Middle School. And just in the audience, we do have the other administrators from Bay Trail. Mr. Buddington sends his regards. He's at a very important meeting that he couldn't get out of, but he wanted to be here. That would be the REO Speedwagon concert. I couldn't help myself, I couldn't. But Jennifer, thank you very much for being here. I just wanted to let the board know and the community is that Jennifer was one of our newer administrators that got to go through what I consider a pretty rigorous application and interview process. So she went through a screening interview with district office administrators and Scott Dreschler, our special education director. And then she went to the building for a building round of interviews. Came back to me for a final interview. Really put her through the gamut. Our interview committee was made up of parents and teachers and special area providers and two amazing students who I really thought did a good job putting Ms. Lerner through the rigor of Penfield. So I'll just turn over so you could say hello to the board, Jennifer.
So I just wanted to say thank you very much for this opportunity and for welcoming me into such a wonderful community of educators and parents and families.
Awesome.
Thank you.
I'll turn it to the board. Do you have any final, like, interview questions? She's already, you already approved her, so...
Thank you so much.
Before you leave, I just wanted to personally welcome you and say hello. And I think it's wonderful, if you don't know by now, this is quite the norm. You're going to have a lot of support. I think it's a wonderful show of support that everyone's here.
It's a great team.
Yes, I'm glad you think so because we're quite proud of them as well. But, you know, welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
And good luck as you endeavor on this new, you know, this new phase of your personal growth in your career. That's wonderful.
It's a wonderful place to be.
Well, thank you.
And so you know too, Jennifer does come to us with quite a great experience from another school district, Rochester City School District at East High School. And so was in a similar position there. So it's really this summer, we were able to throw her to the fire pretty quickly. And she's already running meetings and meeting with the team. And I will share publicly that I just sat with the superintendent of East High, Sean Nelms, yesterday, who was not very happy with me that we have Jennifer Lerner. So thank you very much again for being here. And I just would share for the board and the community is it's too nice of a night. You do not need to stay for the whole board meeting tonight. But again, for your team, thanks for being here and just to be recognized.
You might just go to the REO Speedwagon concert.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's the only special report that we have this evening.
We're at visitor speaking time on the agenda, but since we don't have a visitor tonight, we will move on. And Levia is still enjoying her summer vacation? Okay, if she insists, we will move on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you. So this evening, I'll do some brief student and staff honors. It's always hard to find student and staff honors in the summer because our students aren't here, but we do have a couple of nice things to report. And then we'll be turning it over to Mr. Argento, who will do our annual school lunch report. And then to Dr. Sansucci, who will be doing the analysis of fund balance and the tax rates for the 2018-19 school year. And then we'll wrap up with Mr. Pfeifer, who's going to give a little overview of our leadership summit review. So I know the font is small here, but this is really incredible. The National Interscholastic Athletic Administration Association announced nationally that Mary Beth Walker, our department chair of physical education and health, has been recognized as a certified athletic administrator. And to earn this distinction, Mary Beth has demonstrated the highest level of knowledge and expertise in the field of interscholastic athletic administration. The voluntary certification process included a thorough evaluation of the candidate's educational background, experience, professional contributions, as well as a rigorous, comprehensive written examination. And Mary Beth is one of an elite group of interscholastic athletic administrators nationwide to attain this level of professionalism. So it's not just about being certified, but really going on, working with the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrator Association. And Mary Beth isn't here this evening because she's enjoying her summer, but just wanted the board and the community to know that. It's really great kudos to Mary Beth and the hard work she's put in. Baseball honor, congratulations to our incoming sophomore, Gage Zyle, on making the USA Baseball 15-under national team. And he'll be competing for the United States in Panama beginning on August 10th. And so just really great, good luck to Gage. And we'll be monitoring. And I know if you follow Penfield baseball on Twitter, I'm sure that they will give us some updates on Gage and his work down there in Panama. And that is the end of my updates. I told you they were short. I will just share, we'll do a better one next in September. But thanks to John Otney and other board members who in the past have been able to get to the program that we went to before this board meeting, which is the kindergarten, sort of the first kindergarten experience where they hear from Mr. Argento about the school lunch program. And then they get to ride a big yellow bus over to Harris Hill Elementary School where they go through safety and learn all about safety on buses. And we had another huge turnout. And Joey did a great job talking about school lunches with our incoming kindergarten and their parents. So I'll call you up, Joey.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam and board. My 18th year giving this report, and I thank you for this opportunity because I do look forward to it every year. We did have a good year and what, which is always a plus. We start out budgeting our, budgeting with 292,000 meals is our goal. We came very, very close to that, 288,054 meals. And that's up a little bit from 2016, 2017. In consideration of that 292,000 meals a year, we use an average daily participation of 1,668. And we actually achieved 1,667. So we were really close in what we were, what our estimate was. So you can see participation estimate was very reasonable. We did have two snow days, so we ended up losing a little bit of that lunch count there. Would have been very, very close with those two serving days. But on top of lunch participation being close to what we were estimating, breakfast actually not only was what we estimated, but it increased by 10%. duly note there, breakfast participation is about 50% of our free and reduced, 50% of our breakfast participation is the families that qualify for free and reduced. So we see the value there in offering the free meals for the families that qualify for reduced lunch or free there because they do participate heavily in that program. So with that participation, the revenues and expenditures were very realistic. I mentioned, you lose a little bit of revenue with the two snow days. You're going to have some food there, your food costs, but the staff is also paid for those two days. But in our estimates with the participation, the state and federal aid, we're at budget. Our other sales actually is always the one revenue line that can be, I'm conservative when I try and predict it, but it was greater than what we budgeted. And from that revenue, it kind of offset some of our food purchases and costs. And that line does seem to increase every year. And we've got a little trend there, but that's okay, it's revenue. So in the end, the fund balance is going to increase by $12,613. And we do remain in compliance with our balance limitations. So moving forward, we've been noticing that, you know, 292,000 meals is a good baseline to plan off of. So we're going to maintain that as one of our goals. The cooperative bids that have all come back throughout the year. We've just seen some small increases in our market basket items. So those are just going to increase slightly. And employee and labor increases are always going to be necessary to facilitate minimum wage. So that goes up a little bit this year. And employee benefits decreases a little bit because we have eliminated a couple of positions that carried benefits. So that line actually went down this year. And our material and supplies, which is our paper goods, there's a slight increase there. This budget goes up about 2.2% budget to budget from last year. Again, we're going to carry the same anticipated average daily participation and the same type of amount of meals served. In this budget year, we still do have reauthorization provisions that carry forward. And they will do that until, indefinitely until somebody takes a change. But one of them provisions is going to be, also be the New York State minimum wage. That's going to go, carry on until 2020. So that does have a cost effect on us. Where am I clicking? There we go. And the provisions that come from child nutrition and USDA, as you heard me mention last year, the Secretary of Agriculture has kind of frozen everything. But in this school year, there will be some final decisions that are made. But until then, everything is going to stay the same. So our continuing education, training, those hours are all going to remain the same. And the sodium reductions are going to remain the same, as I mentioned, professional development. Coming into this school year, we have two new policies. We were, had to revise our wellness policy. So our wellness policy, which is going to be in effect this year, is also in concussion with the lunch shaming policy, which is going to be new for this school year. And we will be spending time with our staff, training them this summer, making sure they understand how that impacts them on the front lines with the students. This budget is going to have a slight increase for lunch prices, just a nickel. Full paid lunch price is going to be $2.80 this year and $1.50 for breakfast. And again, we want to maintain no cost for those that qualify for free and reduced lunch or breakfast. The history of our lunch prices is here. Or this is where we fit with the other districts around us. We remain pretty low at breakfast. They're actually the best deal in town, if you want to say. And we're right about in the middle of the pack at lunch on both the elementary and secondary level. And 50 cents for extra carton of milk. And this is, this is where you get to ask me questions about what we're doing.
Board members, any questions or comments for Joey? Mark?
And one question. You talked about other income. Can you just elaborate on what the other income includes?
Sure. Those are the à la carte sales. Students that don't choose to actually buy a reimbursable meal. They just want to buy a beverage or a snack, ice cream. We also have inner office events and then booster events that we support. Call them catering if you want. That's also in there as our other income.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Dr. Putnam?
I just, you want to point out, you mentioned the lunch shaming policy?
Yes.
And just for the folks watching who aren't in, sort of in tune with what's going on is that, you know, there is a new law through our governor that, you know, basically says we can't shame kids if they don't have a lunch. If they don't have money on their account, we're going to feed them a hot lunch regardless.
Correct.
And one of the things I think is important is, you know, Penfield wasn't cited on that. We're not, our folks who work in our cafeterias don't shame anybody. But it's one of those pieces where a district somewhere in New York State got in trouble. And so it's a law now that goes across all, all school districts.
Correct.
But I have kids who eat in our cafeterias and I love to come in and eat in the cafeterias. And it's always, you know, sort of the folks are friendly on the front line. And we don't have that issue, but we now safeguard future of the district because of the policy that the board approved at the end of last year. And the other thing I'll just mention is I did some math. And I think that we can get you that exact number if I just don't have any snow days this year. So what I'm hearing is, I think I'm going to help you out, no snow days. And we get that number.
How many students are watching?
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Before you go, I just wanted to say thank you. This is obviously a lot of work. You do a great job for us every year with your report. But first of all, number one, for coming out on a summer night.
Not a problem.
We do appreciate that. And then I think that one of the, one of the things that when parents send their kids off to school, they don't think at all about what goes on to put their kids' lunches and breakfast together. They just assume it's going to be there, they take it for granted. I'm sure if they were to stop and think about it, they would appreciate it. But I don't think you hear that appreciation very often. So I just wanted to let you know that we do appreciate the efforts you put forth. And we know it's a big job and we think you do it well.
Thank you. And I have many folks that help me achieve that goal every year. And I will always, I always make a point to forward that to them when I meet them. And they're the ones on the front lines that, you know, are doing, doing the work. So I will definitely pass that on to them.
Well, every time that we're there for our board tours, we do see some of those people. And they're, and they're just, they, you know, they're so friendly to us and very welcoming to us. But yes, please do, because we do appreciate the job you do.
Excellent. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Guys, have a great night. Well, welcome to the board.
President?
Yes.
You know, maybe we should, I know a couple of years ago, we configured a lunch into the tour.
That's right, we did.
At the high school.
That's right, we did.
At the high school. So, you know, I don't think it's a bad idea, just for the experience at least.
Yeah.
For our newer board members in particular.
Yeah, that would be fun.
I think it's a great idea. I get to pick which day we go, correct?
Pizza day?
Taco on a bag.
Taco on a bag.
Taco on a bag, so. Second to Taco on a Bag?
Oh my gosh, that's great. What a great idea.
And we can, you know. I would tell you, I would tell you, I don't have that power because of how well planned our cafeteria staff and Joey are. Those calendars are set because they've got to meet all of those minimum sodium requirements and whole wheat requirements. So it, one change like that, I could, I could throw it all off. So we'll make sure we get a tour on a, actually, they're all good lunch days.
Yes, exactly.
All right, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Sansucci for the analysis of the fund balance.
Thank you. In your agenda is a much longer agenda item than this. I just want to summarize where we ended up the school year. So this will seem familiar to you because this is really the second presentation of it. We had this conversation in June at the June 30th meeting. And these numbers are very, very similar. The reason that we do it twice is June 30th represents the, June 30th represents the end of the school year. But in our world, in Mr. Maloney's world, June 30th goes on for quite a while. So as you, as you close the books, as you get bank statements, as the work goes on to close the school year, June 30th, you know, sometimes takes several months to get closed. So, but we need to estimate at the, by the end of June 30th where we're going to end up so the board can make certain determinations. We revisit it tonight because tonight we are also setting our tax levy, the tax levy that we planned during last year's budget process for this year. So that's an important event and it all ties together where we've been, where we're going for the next school year. There's some slight chance, the auditors are in this week, that they may find some corrections that may need to be made. And if they're substantive, we bring those, we also always bring those back to the board. So this is sort of an ongoing process. Tonight's an important date, though. An important part of this process, again, because of the establishment of the levy and of the tax rate. These numbers are very similar to the ones that you saw in June. In fact, within a couple of hundred thousand dollars. So we begin the year with beginning fund balance, both appropriated and unappropriated, what we used to reduce tax levies in 1718 and what we carried over in our unreserved fund balance. We add the revenues, the revenues from operations of the district throughout the course of the year, our encumbrances that we carried over. We had a capital project, you will recall, that required a use of, that was approved by the voters. And as part of that, they approved the use of funds from the Capital Reserve. So that's reflected here, coming into the general fund and going back out to that capital project. Also, same thing with transfers from bus reserve and other transfers in support of the program. And then you reduce it by expenditures. Expenditures and transfers, the money going out to that capital project. Bus purchases, year-end encumbrances, allocations, interest allocations to the reserves, interest earned on those reserves. You end with assigned and unassigned fund balance. Where this all ends up is we'll make, and this is consistent with the recommendations that the board adopted in June. We'll maintain our unassigned fund balance at 4%. We'll use $2,071,599 to reduce taxes. We adjust the EBLR reserve slightly. This is the Employee Benefits Accrued Liability Reserve. This was previously authorized, but we didn't have, in June, we didn't have this number. So it's a small reserve and a small adjustment, but about $4,000. We continue to fund our 2016 capital reserve against a future capital project. We funded the 2017 school bus reserve. And we established funds against tax sursuri. I can tell you that with regard to tax sursuri, we'd intended to fund at about 75%, I think, of the outstanding claims. We haven't adjusted that. We didn't propose adjusting it. But we've had sort of a little flood of new reserve claims. And so we're now really at about 40-some-odd percent. That's still adequate. We'll just need to take a look as we go throughout this year, make another determination as we get to next year. And then we always include that caveat because we're not quite done yet, that any adjustments, any small, they should be small adjustments at this point, would be made against the Capital Reserve. So the big numbers, the, out of all of that, what's really important? Appropriated to reduce taxes, 2071. The levy that we proposed in the adopted budget was slightly higher than 63 million, about a few thousand dollars higher than that. There are, there are re-levis that reduce that. That's explained in your agenda. So the final levy is 63,284,343,000. And we're maintaining that just under $4 million undesignated fund balance. With that, with a $63 million levy and $2 million applied in reductions, this is what the tax rates, final tax rates look like. So you can see rates increase slightly in, rates increase in Penfield. Mostly because in this year, the change is driven by the change in equalization rate. Penfield is falling to 95%. Their rating increases slightly more because of that. The other towns are down. Brighton went back, Brighton went from fractional equalization, from a much lower equalization rate, back to 100 because of their reassessment. Penfield will reassess next year. All of those changes, changes in assessment, changes in assessments in the towns, changes in equalization rates drive changes in the rates. But I think what's important for us tonight is that this levy is consistent with what the voters approved. And the rates are slightly below, in all cases, just slightly below, a half percent or so below what was in our advertising. We estimate this, we don't really know it. But we do the best we can to accurately estimate what those rates will be for our newsletter and our advertising and our budget discussions. And we're slightly, we're better than that slightly. So I think we've delivered to that commitment to the voters. With that, are there any questions?
Board members? John?
Any other large sursuris?
The ones we've, no, the ones that we've gotten really were, you know, it seems that, normally in the course of these, you have a tax sursuri, it seems that they like to get about five years on record before they take any real action to move it forward. So they file, file, file. They get that on record because it costs them, and I think the rationale for that is it costs them about the same amount of money to pay attorneys to go to court and argue about five years as it does for one year. So you may as well get the biggest bang for your buck. I think there's a time limit as to how far back you can go. I think five years has something to do with that. So this is kind of what we see. They pile up with no action. We reserve against them. And then as it gets into that fourth and fifth year, there'll be some movement, either to press forward, go to court, or to settle with the town at something. We're sort of in the spot now where the, many of our larger tax sursuris are in the second and third year. So it's probably going to go on for a couple of years. A few will settle, you know, they're not universal. I'm happy to provide the board with a report as to what those are. In fact, it's attached every year. In a couple of months, we'll be looking at reserves and it's attached to that. But that's kind of where we're at. I think we're in a spot now where it's, you know, the liability, if you will, is going to grow a little bit every year for a while.
We've had some hotel construction.
Yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing unique or dramatic. Or you'll recall one year, I know you will remember, that, you know, paychecks was a large case. They brought a tax sursuri. Nothing unique like that.
Okay. And for Bill, you know, we cooperate, we basically use the town's attorneys. Correct, Mark?
Correct.
When this happens. So it's a partnership with the town because even though we're the larger part of the tax burden, we work together, as most school districts do, correct, Mark?
Correct.
Most all work together.
Correct.
To deal with these type of claims. And so it happens. But usually it's, you know, someday we'll talk about how that all comes about.
Right, right.
The plan and the tax abatements that they get and how we don't have control over it. Thanks, Mark.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Turn it over to Mr. Pfeifer to talk a little bit about our 2018 Leadership Summit.
Looking for me there, sir?
I sure will.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you. It's hard to believe that this was three weeks ago already. It feels sometimes like we're trying to slow summer down a little bit and enjoy it and make the most of it. And then all of a sudden, you think about it, it's like, whoa, wait a minute, that was a little while ago. But really, as we reflected, Tom and I and Barb joined the conversation and talking with some of our administrative team and even some of our teacher leaders, really feel like this was really one of the most powerful and meaningful summits we've had, at least in my time here. You know, we started out on day one with our administrative team, about 25 administrators there. We worked with Jeanette Adams Price from Monroe One Boses, who continued our year-long work that we started at the prior year's summit around feedback and providing growth-promoting feedback. As we think about our mission, as I said, to the teams there, about growing and developing people, that entails a lot of feedback. Letting people know what the expectations are and where they are in that journey. And what we dug into on day one with the administrators with Jeanette was really understanding how understanding how, what people's preferences are, in terms of giving feedback and receiving feedback, almost like students' learning styles and teachers', teaching styles, preferences. But really looking at, there is a science to that, and we really dug into that during the morning part of day one, to understand how we can best provide feedback to our staff and model that, so that they, our teachers can then turn and use those same skills with students to help them grow and develop. So that was an outstanding morning of learning, and then in the afternoon, we had the folks from the Children's Institute in to share with us the results of the survey, to share with the entire administrative team. We had heard it, the senior cabinet, the board had heard it, principals and directors had heard it, but our, not all of our assistant principals, none of our assistant principals or house principals had heard that work, and we hadn't really had a chance to process it as a whole group. So the folks from the Children's Institute did a great job taking us through a gallery walk of evidence that they had collected. Some of it was, was statistics and, and data that were collected in the form of graphs, others were statements that were collected from teachers, students, parents, a variety of stakeholders, and we walked around in pairs or triads and reacted to that and had conversation about it and wrote down things that stood out to us and put it on post-it notes and, and left it with those artifacts, and then had the opportunity to go around again and look at people's reactions and statements to that. And it really drove a lot of great conversation and allowed us to dig in in a way far more deeply than just, well, here's the results, what do you think? It really gave us some processing time and time for good conversation about what those results showed. So it was really, and, and the connection between the work around feedback and growth-promoting feedback and understanding how people give and receive feedback really tied quite nicely to our work around the results of the social-emotional learning audit that we had and that. So day two, the board was able to be there in the morning, and thank you again for coming out to support the effort, it was great to see you there, the teachers really appreciated everyone there. We had our teacher leaders join, so we had about 85 folks on day two, as you saw, a pretty crowded room. We started with the Children's Institute, and they took us through the results with the teacher leaders in yet another way. They shared some of the results in kind of almost like a game show format, but then they, they charged really a collaborative task for each of the, the building-level teams to prioritize some, some concepts around social-emotional learning. And so each building then dug into this process around creating what you see, some of the, the diamond-type models there in the picture, around what are the key components of social-emotional learning and how does each building prioritize them? Because while we all think they're important, the cultures of each buildings and the histories of each building may drive how those are prioritized in each one of them. And so we'll be using the work that they did there as we continue our work to, to build our action plan moving forward and build really a district vision around social-emotional learning. That took up the, the entire morning for us on day two, and then the afternoon, the building teams gathered to start their work around their school action plans. So we were, again, very happy to share with them that our goals are consistent, thank you again, and they began the process of working through their teams, processing what they had learned from the, the results of, of the study, but then also continuing what we're doing and what they've been doing in terms of our three goals, and, and trying to weave some of that in without making that the entirety of the action plan until we are able to establish our district action plan in regards to social-emotional learning. As always, I did a, a brief survey out to staff, sent it out to all the participants, and it's a little bit smaller return rate, which I'm going to take as a positive, we got about 30% return, 4.7 out of 5 stars, so people seem to be very pleased with it. Very, we're very engaged with the activities. The two suggestions that, that were the themes of suggestion for improvement were, we would have liked more time around the results and to continue that work around the results and learn more about what we're going to do moving forward, which we're, we just haven't developed that yet, and then more time with their building team to continue the work on the action plan. So they really do value that time as, to have their building-level leadership teams together. And it wasn't, that was a little bit shorter this year, we only had the afternoon, usually we have part of the morning as well, but because we wanted to devote that time to the Children's Institute, we had to cut back a little bit. So all in all, it feels like a success, we're looking forward to continuing those themes with opening day and into the school year, and happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Board members? John?
Yeah, that was a great, great morning, a lot of positive energy, I, I really enjoyed it. I forgot, last year, is there a midpoint gathering where the same group of folks get together and, and reevaluate or reassess where they're at based on their plan?
Not, not with the teacher leaders.
Okay.
You know, that we get together as an all administrative team a couple times a year, and the buildings will meet with their building-level teams throughout the course of the school year. So they're getting together and, and talking about progress on the goals that they establish, but we don't get all back together until the summer.
Cool, thank you.
John?
I, I thought the facility, second year in a row, I think we were there, that really makes a big difference, you know, as far as the alignment of everything. And, you know, I had interacted with the institute just a little bit years ago, and that, that was impressive, I mean, they really have come a long way in the work they've done, and I just think it was, you know, I read that whole report, I mean, it's just fascinating, everything that's, that's in there, and I think that's a great catch for us, you know, getting the, that program.
Getting that grant.
Yeah, Elizabeth and Caitlin did an outstanding job.
And did you?
We're very pleased, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with, you know, I'm all about the energy, you know, I, I said it last year, I felt like the energy of, of that event was really, it was very positive and very, people seemed very happy to be there. And, you know, what I experienced again this year was the same kind of thing as I experienced last year, which, you know, that's a good consistency and that's good to see. And then with the feedback you're getting, it's just getting better, and, and the, the Children's Institute was, like John was saying, that was a, that was an interesting, you know, it, it was lucky for us, but it's an interesting take on what's happening right now and very timely, so, you know, it was, it was really, it was good, and I too cannot believe that was three, I can't believe that. Oh, okay.
What was that, two weeks? All right.
Please let it be two weeks, because that I can believe, I'm thinking, I lost a week, I lost.
I shared with administrators on day one of the summit that, that summer's over, so, so I just, I didn't, I didn't.
We scolded him loudly for that.
I didn't get a lot of positive praise for that, but I always think that as soon as we do our reorg meeting in July, to me, as the superintendent, it's all of a sudden, it's like, oh, we're on to the, you know, everything's now is the, the 18, 19 school year, so, yep.
Yeah, I know.
We still got time, we still have plenty of days left and, and lots of summer.
Yeah, and once we get started, it's still summer, too.
Oh, sure.
So, you know, I mean, I maintain that summer doesn't end till October. That's my story, I'm sticking to it.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Oh, okay, Lisa.
Since we're talking about the Children's Institute and their work, when would we expect to see a plan? I think we talked a little bit about the teacher leaders digging in and then at our workshop a little bit, but I, I don't recall what we.
So the, in working with the Children's Institute, their focus really is not to rush things. And so throughout the, this school year, especially in the beginning of the school year, we're going to be continuing to work on the vision and really wanting multiple stakeholder groups involved in that. And so day one, Children's Institute will be there for opening day to do a overview, not as in-depth, but because we'll have all staff there on opening day to do an overview of their work. And then we will begin creating teams at our buildings to come together with, including stakeholder groups from, I think Joey Argento, food service, our bus drivers, our transportation, our administrators, to begin that visioning work, and then ultimately, the action plan ideally would be sometime during this school year. And one of the things we talked about is they, they talked to us about another district who, you know, really went gung-ho, create an action plan, they came back a year later and none of those action steps had taken place, because it's really easy to put things on paper that you're going to do, but then finding the time during the school year to actually move things forward. And so we're learning from that in the sense that we want our social-emotional learning focus and curriculum to be something that lasts longer than all of us. And one of the things I've been using, thanks to Jim, is really that focus on his, I'll use the term guaranteed and viable curriculum, and it took, you know, it was a three-to-five-year plan to start from, you know, great curriculum, but not necessarily consistent across all grade levels in schools, and then end with a much stronger view of curriculum planned for, for everything that we teach that's consistent, that you can actually put your hands on. And we like to use that same model with the social-emotional learning, as opposed to running out and just buying a program, let's really take our time to look at it. So that's my long answer to say, I don't know, but the goal would be right now, how we have it, how we have the goal, is that by the end of or middle of this school year, have a real action plan that we can start working on. On that note, you'll, you're going to notice, I believe, when you see our school action plans come forward, is our administrators and building teams are already starting to incorporate things they learned from the Children's Institute into their school action plans, but we've also cautioned them, which is, don't run out and try to change the world because we need staff buy-in with everything that we do. The other piece I'll share is that we're bringing in Ken Ginsburg to our, to speak to all of our staff in October, the October Superintendent's Conference, and Ken Ginsburg fits very clearly along the same concept of the work the Children's Institute instituted, it's sort of trauma-informed instruction, and really all about creating a caring culture of, of, in all of our buildings and our district. And we do that, we do great things, but what can we really stand up and say, this is what we do to support social-emotional learning, as opposed to, here are all these pockets of great things we do, but what is our consistent message in all buildings in the entire district? So it's a long, I really see it as something that's going to take us time because there's no quick fix. If you Google it right now, there are a million programs that we could go out and drop money on, but that doesn't, it's not the Penfield way, and it's not really, that's something that's going to be lasting beyond the people who are currently in our building. So we want to do it right and make sure that we set our students and our staff up for success moving forward.
Thank you.
And really, it's, and it's not so much us, this is their model they've used for a lot of years in their programs.
The Children's Institute?
Yes.
Yes.
So they've done, I guess, soc, social work with children from municipalities, let's say, and none of their models have ever been like a quick fix. So, and I'm not sure if they've gotten criticized or not, but they seem to be successful because the stuff they're always dealing with is never a quick fix. So I think that, but that's, I think that's also more their way they present and roll out things as well.
And they talk a lot about really the focus of, of how to, how to create this change, and it's sort of like a four-tiered process, and, and I'm going to, I always forget the, the second one, maybe Jim can help me, I don't want to put you on the spot, but it's really about that, that interaction with the teacher in the classroom, or the adult-student interaction, and then it goes to sort of the school culture, you know, your individual school cultures, and, and the fourth one being policy, because that's something that the board will be involved in, and what policies are we creating that really continue this, this sort of direction of social-emotional learning. We talk a lot about the fact that in education, it's something I just, I was on a panel last night for Brockport with a couple other superintendents, and, and one of the things our, our new, people getting their administrative degree are interested in is social-emotional learning and what does it look like, and what I shared was, you know, in education, if you're not long enough, everything is cyclical for about five or seven years, so if there's something you don't really want to do as a teacher or an administrator or as a superintendent, you can just avoid it for five years and it will probably go away. Social-emotional learning isn't going away, it's, you know, we, we do know that in terms of medications and, and kids seeing therapists and the struggle of emotional health is not something that I, I see or any expert sees just going away in five years. So this is something that is sort of the new norm with all school districts, and we're getting a lot of kudos for what Penfield's currently doing, to talk about it, get rid of the stigma around mental health, have conversations, but we also know that we've got a lot of work to do to be where we want to be, to make sure we're reaching all students and, and a caring culture in our buildings. So, it's something I believe strongly, and we're going to continue, you know, continue working on it and make sure that it's done right and is done for a long time, it's not that, again, it's, it's not that quick fix of buying a program and, and throwing it at somebody and running away. So I will tell you, too, the staff is, the, the staff excitement around it is nice, too. You know, we really have, we have a large group from Bay Trail and the high school who've been attending what's called Reaching Teens, which is around social-emotional learning tied to the work by Ken Ginsburg, and they're really starting to build and look at really unique ways on what they can do to support students in, in different ways, so. It's exciting, it's exciting because it's something that really does have a change, and what that means is a slight step back from an academic push. And what I've always said is, you know, Penfield does great, we've got incredible academics, our students are doing incredible work, our teachers are doing incredible work, but it's, if we're going to be a whole student district, then we may need to really talk about, you know, how hard do we push academic success, because if we don't have mental health and whole student success, that academic only brings you so far. And so really trying to balance that out in a district like Penfield is also really important.
I think that balance is probably achievable, given time.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, you know, that's a great goal because the kids are living in very, I mean, I don't even know how some of us adults deal with the complications of the world we live in today, so you have to, I, I don't think it's a stretch for anybody to understand how, you know, challenging it can be for young kids, you know, as they're approaching adulthood especially, so, you know, I just think it's a great, I, I think we're involved in something good and I'm, I'm glad we are involved in it.
I couldn't, I mean, I talk with teachers and talk with the communities, we can't do it without a board that believes in it, so that board's goal around focusing on academic excellence, but also the whole student, and, and setting that goal as well as the goal of partnerships is, is critical to our success in the frontline and in buildings, because you guys set, truly set the overarching vision for our district, and if you said your number one goal is just increased test scores and that's it, that whole student and mental health and social-emotional learning all gets pushed to the side. So it's, it's really the vision of this board that you've continued to support the work that the buildings and the district is doing, so it's, it's kudos to the board.
Or collaborative.
That's, I like that, collaborative. So that actually ends our superintendent reports for the evening.
All right, thank you. Okay, board members, we're on page three of your agenda. Nothing under facilities for tonight, we have our financial items. The attach sets forth the recommended lunch fund budget for the 2018-19 school year. May I have a motion in a second that the lunch fund budget for 2018-19 is recommended by the Food Service Department be approved? You have the lunch prices listed right on the agenda, which Joey went over already. Okay, so I, wait, those are, okay, excuse me, I jumped ahead. Okay, let's go back to the motion in the second that the lunch fund budget be approved for.
Second.
Any questions or comments about that? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Okay, now, for the school lunch prices for 2018-19, the following price schedule for the students for 2018-19 is recommended, and that is what I was referring to when I said Joey went through all that. May I have a motion in a second that approval be given to the Food Service Department for prices of school meals as listed above for the 2018-19 school year?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right. Establishing the 2018-19 tax rates and funding of reserves. The 2018-19 tax rates and analysis of fund balance were presented by Dr. Sansucci tonight, and their details are also printed on our agenda. May I have a motion in a second that the above 2018-19 described transfers and adjustments be approved and that the school tax rate for the 2018-19 school year be calculated on a real property tax levy of $63,284,343. May I have a motion in a second, please? All right, any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right, now we're over on page six. Renewal of intermunicipal fuel agreement. The Monroe County Sheriff's Office and the Penfield Fire District have requested permission to fuel their vehicles at our pumps located at the bus garage on Five Mile Line Road. The district currently allows both the Monroe County Sheriff's Department and the Penfield Fire District to use the district fuel depot. The district is reimbursed for this gas based on our cost of gas on state contract plus a 10 cent per gallon surcharge. These agreements have been in place for several years. Either party may discontinue the agreement with 60 days' notice. Entering this agreement with the Sheriff's Department and the Penfield Fire District does not pose a burden on the district and benefits Monroe County and the Fire District. Approval is recommended. Resolution authorizing intermunicipal agreement, whereas the Monroe County Sheriff's Department and the Penfield Fire District have indicated a desire to enter into a municipal, intermunicipal agreement with the Penfield Central School District, and whereas, the Board of Education finds that there is mutual benefit to such an arrangement. Therefore, be it resolved that the Superintendent of Schools is hereby authorized to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with Monroe County Sheriff's Department for the period September 1, 2018 through August 31, 2019, and with the Penfield Fire District for the period of September 1, 2018 through August 31, 2021. May I have a motion in a second? Any, any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Authorization to contract with campus construction. Authorization to contract with campus construction. On May 15, 2018, the district's voters approved both the general fund budget and a separate capital project for elementary school additions. The $22,588,000 Elementary Additions Project includes classroom additions at Cobble's, Indian Landing, and Scribner, and alterations and renovations at the high school in Bay Trail. Additionally, the general fund budget includes a $1,020, no, $1,028,733 transfer to the capital fund for various renovations, including HVAC, electrical, and PCB remediation at the high school in Bay Trail. Campus construction has submitted for approval a proposal for the construction management services for these projects. The total project budget is established at $23,616,733. The proposal calls for a fixed total fee of $1,388,398, which is equivalent to 6.95% of the $19,985,613 estimated construction costs. Campus construction has provided a proposal dated July 27, 2018 detailing their services and fees. This letter has been provided to the board, approval is recommended. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to negotiate final terms and enter into an agreement with campus construction for services related to the capital projects as described above? Any questions or comments? Yes, John?
Yeah, I should have sent this in. So, this is, can you just confirm, this is similar to SEI? They're excluded from any competitive process because they, they, they provide a, like a specific?
It's exactly the same.
Okay.
Exactly the same.
Specific function.
So, and we compared their, you know, the, it's always difficult to compare one project to another project.
Right.
But the, both Alan and I had conversations with SEI as we negotiated our way through this process. We looked at other competitive, we looked at other equivalent projects and tried to understand the differences, and we're comfortable with this proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Did I see another hand go up? John?
And Mark, it's also familiarity with the client and the facilities is also critical too. It's not, I mean, relationship is important, but there's a big familiarity.
Sure, and, and just in terms of, you know, their relationship with the district, they're familiar with our, they're familiar with this project because they've been along with us through the entire planning of it. They've been with us for the most, on the most recent projects, and they've, they've done very good work for us, so we've been satisfied with that as well.
Lisa?
No, I was just going to say, but regardless though, if they didn't fall on that excluded...
Then we would be bid.
Regardless of our past relationship or...
Right, and in fact, that's the reason for that exclusion for professional services, this falls into that, that, that exclusion, specifically because in the law, they, they recognize that it's very difficult to create bid specifications that sort of capture all of the vagaries of a service like this. So, architectural services, it's quality of the work, it's, it's, it's design, it's, you know, it's, it's very, there's a lot of intangibles, I think, that go into that, physician services, those kinds of things. So, they allow for that exclusion. That doesn't mean you can't not have a policy and you can do anything you want. It means you need to have a policy, which we do, and you need to follow it. So, both, both campus construction and previously the architect were successful in an RFP project, process, and we've continued their uses, their, to use them based on that.
Lisa?
Oh, I have two questions, sorry. But so, when we move forward, they still, like, all the pieces still go to competitive bid? They help facilitate that process, correct?
Right, they're, they're, they're a part of the process.
Right.
So, you know, we're, we, we're not there yet, we're still in design, but we've hired, now our architect, based on an RFP, will hire campus construction to manage the project. So, those are legitimate charges against the project, right? We'll design the project, and then it goes out to competitive bid. The pieces of the project, well, there's, you know, there's a variety of ways that it can be bid. New York State is moving to liberalize and to, and to allow for more options in terms of construction and so on. But very traditionally, and we've done this pretty traditionally for the most part, it, under the WICs law, it'll be multiple prime contracts competitively bid at, at prevailing wage rates. And, and multiple prime contracts means for this work, we'll have, you know, a competitively bid general contractor, a competitively bid plumber, heat, heating, ventilating, air conditioning, electrical, and so on.
Can I ask one?
And you'll, and you'll see those coming to you in probably a year or so, so.
We have a long time. You had asked a question about where their space was going to be? And I think Alan, somebody...
Yes, Alan answered it, correct.
A trailer, but then it says, so is that part of this?
Yes, it's included in it.
Okay, I just wondered, because it says a field office is furnished by the district, so I just wasn't sure if that was part of that, or if that was something separate. Okay, gotcha.
I think one of the things you'll see, that we've seen in the past, this is a small town when it comes to this stuff, and you see a lot of familiar subcontractors, and a lot of them get the awards, and there is competitive bidding, but there's a group of people that work well together, and then there's a group that you may not want to work for you, and then there's a group you don't touch in this business. So, it's, it's more complex than we can even imagine when you see this, but, but I know these, campus construction does this across the state too, so they're really good at what they do.
Mark?
Since you're talking about competitive bidding, is any of this eligible, either goods or the services for piggybacking on other?
It's going to, some of it will be. So, for example, in, and we're not there yet, we're still putting those pieces together, but in the past, for example, we've used either competitive bidding or state contract to purchase pieces of equipment and, and bought it that way. That's another kind of competitive bidding, if you will. We didn't do it, but someone else did it in our stead. And then we've bid the installation. You know, you might want to do that, and we might consider doing that. In fact, we are considering doing that for the, for the chiller project here at the high school. Alan has an interest in, you know, particular kinds and styles of, of equipment. If that equipment is available bid by someone else or bid on state contract, we might want to purchase it that way, then we control what we get and bid the installation. If you simply bid the whole thing, the contractor has a right to go out and, and shop it around, and you're going to take whatever they get. So, you know, we want to make sure that, in this process, that we, you know, I always joke when I get on an elevator, I always say, well, this is the elevator I'm riding on that was installed by the low bidder. You, you, you know, you, we want to make sure that, as we go through the process, that what comes out of that is bid, is bid competitively, so that the public can be assured that they're getting the best price. That's what that's intended to do. But you also have to be assured, and I think we also have to be able to assure our public, that they're getting the, what they want, right? I mean, that somehow that process is, it doesn't mean they're taking something, we are taking something that, that doesn't fit our needs, or that, you know, in terms of equipment, or installation, or supply, you know, it, it has to suit what we want. And so, campus helps us with that. The architect is careful in their design around, it's why we value the relationship around the specifications, good tight specifications lead to that as well. So, all of that plays a role. And, and, you know, as, as the, as you know, we have, we spend a lot of time and, and are continuing to have regular meetings as we work throughout that process. So, we have, I don't know if we told you this, but we have approval, we've received SED approval on the chiller portion of this project. So, that means we're getting ready to move forward, we'll be getting ready to move forward with bids and with, and with plans for that. So, more news to come, but that's very good news. We, we used the expedited approval process through SED, and it truly was expedited. So, we're, I don't want to say we're ahead of schedule because people yell at me later on, but, but we're in good shape. We're not in bad shape. Trying to back away from it, but I think we're...
It was a lucky break.
Yes, yes.
That's good to hear, that, that new process is more on the streamlined and a way of doing it. Wasn't that a big issue, was SED timelines?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, our initial plans for this, just the chiller piece of this project, you know, had that approval way out. So, with approval now, we'll be able to, you know, we're planning on bidding, not right now, because at, right now, the, the timing is such that, and this is campus's advice, so I'm, this is the kind of expertise that you pay for, but they recommend that we wait just a little bit to bid. Because right now, the contract, there's a lot of work out there, and the contractors are coming off of a busy, busy summer. So, they're rushing to school opening, and we won't get the same attention to our bid that we will if we wait just a little bit. If we get into September, get into October, they'll be, they'll be done with their work, they'll be looking for their next project, and we'll be well, you know, we'll be well-situated to get good competitive bids and good contractors bidding for our work for that, then for the following summer. So, we still need to, we'll even be able, hopefully, to begin work prior to summer. So, I think we're in good shape. I think this is good news.
Very good. All right, we have a motion and a second on the table, so, and we've answered questions and heard the comments, so, all in favor? None opposed, thank you. Authorization to contract with campus construction. On February 13, 2014, the voters authorized $3,600,000 for security improvements to the district's buildings. We are nearing the completion of the project. A list of proposed work to complete the project was reviewed at the 31617 board meeting, and the necessary design work and submittal of the project to SED was approved at the June 13, 2017 meeting. This work includes window treatments, replacement of old windows with, old window treatments with black fabric light filtering shades that reduce visibility from the exterior, yet allow the inside occupants to see outside. Door replacement, replacement of existing doors that are in poor condition, and signage, installation of wayfinding or directional signage with the primary focus on interior wayfinding. Campus construction has submitted for approval a proposal for the construction management services for this phase of the project. The proposal is based on a fixed flat fee of $49,346, which covers staffing during the anticipated project scheduled from April through November 2018. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to negotiate final terms and enter into an agreement with campus construction for services related to the capital projects as described above?
Sumo.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. School physician contract. Robert Toot has appro, was approved as school physician at the July 10, 2018 Board of Education meeting. The RFP results spreadsheet was inadvertently left off the original agenda item. It is now attached. Also, it is necessary to approve the contract terms and conditions for the 2018-19 school year per the terms of RFP number 18-10. The contract calls for the payment of $26,000, a 23.8% decrease over last year. Dr. Toot's contract runs August 1, 2018, through July 31, 2019. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education designates Dr. Robert Toot pursuant to RFP 18-10, and authorizes the signature of the superintendent of schools to negotiate final terms and to enter into a contract with Dr. Robert Toot for the 2018-19 school year?
Sumo.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Yes?
Just wanted to thank the board for that approval for Dr. Toot, and also just take a moment to share with the board and the community that this is because Dr. Sidney DeVore, who's been our school physician for, Mark, do you remember how many years? Because I...
Very many.
Very many, yes. So, yeah, it was, we're going to make up 37, but it was, I think it predated Mark.
It predates me.
So, and she did retire, and Mark and I, and Kathy Harris, the head nurse at Harris Hill, took her out to lunch at the end of the school year to Shadow Pines, nope, Shadow Lake. Would have been a very, it would have been a picnic lunch at Shadow Pines, it was at Shadow Lake. So, but, and did, you know, present her with, with, you know, a gift and just a thank you. And Dr. Toot, you may or may not know, actually subbed in for her when she was out of town this last year, if she ever had, was out of sort of email. And Dr. Toot is a local physician, well-known, and I think is, is, we're excited to have him on board, so thanks for that, and hopefully he'll be with us hopefully for many years. It comes up every year, but he's, we're looking forward to working with him in a professional way. So, thank you.
Yes. Okay, wait, did, okay. Oh, okay, so I'm, I'm right here. Okay. Wellness policy coordinator. The board adopted the revised federally required district wellness policy on June 12, 2018. One of the requirements of this policy is that the board designate one person as the district wellness coordinator. This position is responsible for overseeing the implementation of this policy throughout the district. The role of the district wellness coordinator is to serve as the driving force for developing and implementing the wellness policy, maintain documentation demonstrating compliance with community involvement requirements, and make the well, make the wellness policy, updates to the policy, and triennial assessments available to the public. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education designate James Pfeifer as district wellness coordinator for the 2018-19 school year? Any questions or comments?
So, you'll be backing up Dr. Toot when he's not here?
I don't know if that's quite what it entails.
That's another duty as assigned, right?
There you go. I got to thank Dr. Sansucci for checking a couple of these things off before he handed it over to me.
Yeah, so we did, it's one of those requirements that we have to, by, you know, by state law, have the, have a wellness policy coordinator. And a lot of people have their hands in our wellness policy. Obviously, the board and the policy committee are building principles. It has, it touches food service, touches a large sort of gamut. But Jim, I wanted to actually say thank you. We, we do joke that Jim gets all the duties otherwise assigned by the superintendent, but he also oversees our directors, and some of the wellness policy does deal with sort of the instructional focus and what we do there. And so, there's a lot of people who work there. We talked about Nicole Whitehead as our STEAM director when we talked about, because she also oversees health curriculum. And so, you know, please know, Jim, that this doesn't all just fall on you, it really is a district thing, and it goes back to our social-emotional learning and how this is sort of tied into that. And one of the biggest changes in our wellness policy that was put into place at the end of last year was a shift to recess, and looking at the research on how important recess is for that brain break for kids in our elementary schools who get recess. And the biggest change in there, and it took, that's why it took time, because it was about getting stakeholder feedback and having these conversations, the board can always just pass a policy, but if we want it to be practiced in our buildings, we need to take the time to work through it. And one of those big changes is that teachers at the elementary level aren't allowed to use recess as a punishment for students for educational academic reasons. And really, that is, if a student doesn't do his homework, keeping him in from recess has a, a different impact on that student who might need that brain break, might need to be able to go out and, and play and run, and on a really cold rainy day, when they're not outside, it's still a brain break in terms of what they can do inside. So, it's a, it's a big shift when it looks at wellness, and I just want to say thank you for, Jim, for stepping up to be the, the coordinator, and also acknowledge that it's a lot of people in our buildings who are doing a lot of the work around that. And no, you didn't have a choice.
All right. Any, no other comments, right? Okay, all those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right, under President's remarks, one on the agenda, I have another item to, to address, but first, the board docs training is Monday, August 27. I know I'm going to be there at 5 o'clock. So, are we going to do that right here, Jim? Or is it DO?
Yep.
It, it DO, oh, okay.
It's at DO, and Jim has been our go-to... It's at DO, and Jim has been our go-to for Microsoft 365 in the work, but board docs is, is actually going, running through our board clerk. So, Sharon Irkfits will sort of take the lead, but we'll have the board, they're coming in to train us.
Okay.
So, the training will be by the board docs' expertise.
Oh, excellent, okay, very good. Mark, you had, you were going to share with us your Albany trip yesterday.
For, for the New York State School Board Association, I am the area two representative for the resolutions committee. And so, what the member, what the representatives do is they review the resolutions that are being proposed for this year's business meeting to decide whether or not the committee wants to recommend them for approval or not. And it really just, it, when it comes to the business meeting in October, they'll, the ones that are approved will automatically come to the floor, the ones that are not approved, the individual sponsors of them have to manually bring them to the floor. So, we reviewed them all, and interesting, there was a theme this year, there always, often there's a theme, we had 20 resolutions, seven of them, or over a third of them, were related to school safety. So, that's clearly the theme for this year, and all aspects of school safety, and I think we'll, we'll see a lot of them, I'd say all of them passed, just about. And there were two that, two of the 20, not necessarily tied to the school safety, two of the 20 that we recommended not to put forward, mainly not because they weren't good ideas, but because they sort of violated that tenet that we have of local control. It was almost advocating creating a law that would take away a school board authority. And so, that, the people who put those forward didn't really, that wasn't really something that they recognized they were doing when they did it, because they were meaningful resolutions. But because of that, we have, and we'll have to say we don't recommend it, and we'll explain why. It's not that it's because it's a bad idea, it's just because it doesn't, it conflicts with that other thing. So, again, this will be, these will all come to the meeting in October, and we will have, and what happens is if the, if the New York State School Board Association, essentially all the representatives from all the districts approve it, then the New York State School Board Association uses that as a platform, plus the resolutions in previous years, for which they lobby on our behalf with the, our legislative representatives to help get laws passed that benefit all school districts.
Nice. Well, as always, thank you for your work on this, and, you know, you do such a great job, and I love how you can, I think these are complicated issues, and when you present them to the board, you really simplify them, I appreciate that. So, thanks for taking the time to do that yesterday, and let us know what you're up to today. So, that's great, thank you. And unfinished business, we have your committee assignments, and I just need to clarify, under the, yeah, the NISBA Legislative Representative, Lisa? Oh, I'm sorry. Well, he was for what he did yesterday.
Resolutions.
For the resolutions, but this is the, we were, this is what we were asking you about. Right. Now, are you able to do that, or, okay, so Lisa would be on the app now, okay. And so, all the other committee assignments have been taken care of? I guess it's completed now.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What, I'm confused why the board of ed orientation process is still on there, I thought we were pulling that off? Are we doing more work there?
Where?
Under subcommittees?
Well, we have a new board member this year, so we're just, what we're doing is helping our new board member. That's what it is, that we're going through the orientation process with the new, with the new board member.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay. I just didn't know if we missed some, because I was like, we've been doing that for two years, what did we miss?
No, it's done.
It wasn't the handbook, it was, Catherine asked me to serve as the mentor for our new board member, and...
Right, well, that was part of, that was, but that's what we were talking about, right? I was like, yay, we didn't forget.
No, we didn't forget, and, you know, it, I mean, that whole board handbook revision came in, I mean, it was very timely.
Right, right.
So, that's what this is, is, you know, we're implementing it now.
Awesome, great, thank you.
Sure. Okay, no, no other questions about the committee's assignments? All right, very good. All right, no, I guess I put new business under unfinished business, but it's all the same, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right, there being no other business, may I have a motion in a second that the meeting be adjourned at, and my computer's off, so, at 8:17 PM?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Aloha, our babbie artists.